Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Mayor Commission Work Session. Today is August 30th, 2021, and the time is 10:00 a.m. We will start with the first item, which is staffing at Fire Station Eight. President Paduzzi, do you want to introduce this item before we get into the presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You may or may not know that City of West Palm, actually, let me start off here. I think we can all agree that one of the most important responsibilities that we have as elected officials is ensuring the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. That must include all of our residents, both near and far. As most of my colleagues here on this day is know, Station Eight covers an area that is fairly, in a fairly remote location from the rest of the city. With that, it has some unique challenges. This coupled with the fact that the station is not fully staffed, makes the situation even more precarious. You may or may not know that the City of West Palm Beach does not have enough staffing at Station Eight to even handle some of the simplest of calls by itself without calling in help from the county or the City of Palm Beach Gardens. The City of West Palm Beach cannot handle a car accident with injuries on Northlake Boulevard, ever, without having assistance from those other agencies. That's because our station out there is an either-or station. We can either send an engine or a rescue, but not both. A simple car accident with any report of injuries requires an engine and a rescue. As such, the City of West Palm Beach, the capital city, the leader in every other area, can't handle a car accident without assistance of another agency. That's just one example that minimal staffing or an either-or station presents. There's also been some talk that the county has enacted a level of service that pretty much gets rid of either-or stations. Although we may not be under that ordinance, because it is a county ordinance and I believe would apply to those unincorporated areas, it's still a level of service that we should probably strive to, to, you know, for our city as well. So that's, Mayor, really, the crux of it. And I'm not sure if there'll be enough time also. The next closest station to Station Eight is Station Nine. Station Nine is also a minimally-staffed station. I think there's three firefighters at Station Nine, and they're operating out of a temporary structure. So that's something that should need to be addressed at some point, too. But I appreciate the opportunity to, you know, to start this dialogue and make sure that all of our residents can feel safe in all of our communities.
Thank you. Chief Matty, looks like you have a presentation teed up.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Diana Matty, Fire Chief. Good morning, Mayor Commissioners and Staff. And I have a Fire Station Eight presentation here for you as requested. So I'm going to go into a little bit of the background of Fire Station Eight. It was first put into service in 2006. The crews ran out of a construction trailer that was split in half. Half was for the contract, half was for the contractors, and half was for the firefighters. They hung out in the back of the trailer for 12 hours a day. It was an ALS engine, staffed with overtime, and did not include additional FTEs at that point. So that went on for a couple of years. That was over off of Sand Hill Way in Ibis, actually, in the development. Further down the line, in 2008, it moved to the trailer that you see on the left side. It was a temporary facility with an awning, so the apparatus are at least shaded. And then, at that point, when we went from the construction trailer to this trailer, we did what's the either-or, so two units out of that station, and we did have permanent FTEs for those positions. And then, we had the grand opening of the brick-and-mortar building in 2019. This is the current zone map for Fire Station Eight. You can see it runs slightly north of Northlake, along the B-line, and then down south into the southern border being grassy waters, and a little bit west into the acreage. So adaptive response, as the Commissioner talked about, we have two apparatus there. So those are not necessarily the exact apparatus that are there, but the one on the right is what's called a rescue, and that's what transports people to the hospital. And the one on the left is a pumper, also called a fire engine, and then that's what goes first out on fires, vehicle accidents, things like that. And there are three firefighters at that station, and depending on what the primary need for that emergency is, they take either-or vehicle. So this is a snapshot of the Station Eight calls by month, from January of 2020 to June of 21. So the last 18 months, you can see how many calls that, how many calls are run by that fire station per month. With March of '20, we had a peak, which is likely related to COVID, because that was when things first started increasing for us down here. So just over time, you can see it kind of ebbs and flows, and there's a little bit of seasonality to it. In the, in the winter months, January, February, we start to see a little bit more, and then again, October-ish, September, when it's more pleasant to be here, I suppose. But that's what that looks like. And then, this is Station Eight calls for service are in blue, but as compared to Fire Station Nine in red, and then Fire Station Seven, which is out off of Okeechobee Boulevard near Bay Winds, and some of those other developments right out there, past the Publix. So you can see an increase in the, in the trend line for Station Seven and Eight, excuse me, Station Seven and Station Nine. Station Eight's kind of remaining around that same, you know, within 30 calls of 600 for the last several years. So probably double what it was when it first opened, more than double what it was when it first opened. So it's just, it's over time. And these are the time averages for the last six months. I went in and pulled the most recent six months. So response time is broken up into several categories when we talk about an overall response time. So there's the time that the dispatchers have to handle the call, meaning take the 911 call, type it in, dispatch it out. There's turnout time, which is the time when the speakers open, the firefighters receive notification, put on their gear, equipment, whatever's needed, and the truck starts moving. And then the travel time is actually the time that the wheels are turning from the front of the fire station to the location of the emergency. So you can see the comparison in Station Eight versus the citywide average. So in town, our travel time is, you know, significantly less, just due to distance. This is what's called a heat map, and these are, this is a snapshot of August of 2020 to July of 21, so a full calendar year of the house fires, brush fires, et cetera, where the fire truck was needed on those calls. And that's in Station Eight's response zone. And then, medical calls, the same time period for a one-year calendar year with just the medical calls that occurred in that zone. So I can take questions.
Okay. President Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. You know, I certainly can see, when you look at call volume, that the call volume in Station Eight's area is significantly less than the call volume of some of the surrounding areas and some of the other zones in West Palm Beach. But is that the only thing that we should be looking at, is the call volume, when determining proper coverage for a zone? Because even though there may not be a volume of calls, when a serious or significant call comes in, don't you want to make sure that there's adequate staffing at the time to make sure that we can handle anything that happens anywhere in the city?
Absolutely. And with that, we have mutual aid agreements. So you can see in this slide here, number nine, down there in the lower left-hand corner, you have Palm Beach County Fire, Station 26. And then further east, which is off the map, is one of the Gardens stations. So whenever we have something that is more complex than what that first unit can handle, we receive mutual aid from them. You know, going back to the history of this, when we went from not having anything out there to having a part-time truck, to, you know, getting a permanent fixed facility where we could, you know, take showers and cook meals and things like that, in the, in the trailer that you see here on the left, to now having a building. So we've come, you know, I feel like we've come a long way since its inception, now having permanent staff. But, you know, in the future, that is, you know, mentioned in our strategic plan as, you know, something we have to address as, as those neighborhoods out there. For example, we never even used to have a station at Station Nine, and we looked at what are the response times to that area? And those, the reason we opened a fire station in the strip mall next to a pizza shop and a Dunkin' Donuts was because we needed to put a footprint out there. We needed to have, and within a day of putting that rescue truck out there in Station Nine Zone, those citizens got at least two minutes better response time per call. So yes, response time is one thing. The number of times that somebody else has to run your call is another factor. Volume is another factor. Obviously, it goes without saying, budget is another factor. So the distance that we would need to travel to the call, there's, there's a number of factors that we look at when, when making that case. And, and that's just what happened with Fire Station Nine, who's now in a, another, it's actually very similar to this trailer, but it was the trailer that we used for Station Four when we did the construction. It got moved out there off of Haverhill and Roebuck, and so now they're, they're in that temporary facility.
Chief, a couple of questions. One is, do you have any data on how often we have had to request service under the mutual aid agreements that we have?
It's about 10%.
So 10, only 10%?
It fluctuates. You know, we were, the reason we got the additional unit at Fire Station Number Seven, remember, it used to just be, just like this, it was an either-or. Adaptive response, they picked which unit they went on. When we looked at the number of, the percentage of calls that somebody else had to handle, Station Seven was creeping up into the 14, 19%, you know, so let's call it 20 for, for talking purposes. 20% of the time, Station Seven wasn't running the calls for Station, for City of West Palm people, it was Palm Beach County. So now, the issue with Station Eight's percentages is there's not enough calls to really get an accurate piece of data. I have to look at years, not months, when it comes to, because they're, because of the volume. But when they're not there, right, either Gardens or Palm Beach County has to run the call, meaning they're not there because they're on another call, the truck is broken, or just needs regular maintenance, whatever the case is, they're coming back from another call sometimes, and maybe Palm Beach County goes out first, and then they're the second due on that incident. So that hovers around. It's been as high as 11, 11.4% and as low as 8%.
And then I guess my next question is, do you have metrics, data, protocol that tells you when you should move a statement from either-or or the adaptive use to a more fully-staffed station?
That's, that's based on a number of factors, and that's how we, we did it with Station Seven, and that availability of that first due unit to, to cover that zone. And now that Station Seven has two units, it's only about 3 to 4% of the time that a West Palm Beach unit is not providing services to West Palm Beach.
So what are the factors that would contribute to that decision for Station Eight, say?
So call volume is one. The, the travel time that we see on the call, you know, that's, it's two minutes about longer than it is in a citywide average. There's availability of funds, there's availability of the apparatus, you know, we need, we would obviously need to hire more people. So there's a, quite a number of factors that we have to plan out, if that, you know, and just population. Over time, with all of the new development, you know, when Ibis first opened, and there was, I don't know what the, the number of residents was, but it's, there's a lot more homes in Ibis now than there was in, in Ibis when we had, when we were living in the construction trailer. So just with population density, call volume goes up naturally, because you have more car accidents, you have more people in the area demanding services.
Well, let me, I guess, let me ask a question. Do you think now is the time to move from an adaptive use to a more fully-staffed station in Station Eight, based upon all the data that you look at?
I think it can be an incremental thing, similar to what we did with the construction trailer, part-time. You know, we have to look at Fire Station Nine as well, you know. The question was asked, it's, it's a similar situation. When you look at the, the call volume there, we went from running zero calls in that zone as a primary to, because other units were coming in. Since we've made it its own zone, the, those calls keep going up. Now, the calls in the other zones haven't gone down. So what we could theoretically do, if the funding existed, was we could start partially staffing that extra, and looking at what days are the peak times, what would be best based on the numbers of the time of day and the day of the week, you know. If, if Sunday, there's generally not many calls, but Wednesday, Wednesdays is, is a, is a peak for us, then we could try, you know, we could, another thing that we can do that's, that's not, you know, it's kind of steps towards that direction, is there's a lieutenant in charge of that station. A step that's, you know, possible for that is to make that a captain station. So if we do it incrementally, over time, that way it's not so much of a dramatic impact to the budget, we can get there.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you for the presentation, Chief. You mentioned that this is in the strategic plan for the Fire Department to add more staffing. Can you talk a little bit about that, that plan, or is there any background related to that in the strategic plan?
Sure. In 2008, we sat down and had a mixed working group of firefighters from all ranks and some admin, and created a strategic plan just specifically for where our staffing needs were, and some culture issues that we needed to deal with, some training issues that we needed to deal with. More of a strategic plan, just to kind of draw the line in the sand and see where we were, to get a baseline. So we're three years into that, and we've managed to accomplish through budget several of those positions that were greatly needed over the last several years. Building Superintendent, a, we're getting a Fiscal Services Supervisor, excuse me, a Senior Fiscal Analyst in this budget. We got an additional Administrative Assistant two years ago. So, you know, we've, we've made leaps and bounds with where we were. One of the things the Fire Department has traditionally done over time is we put emergency services on the road, and we haven't kept up with the skeleton, the backbone that pays the bills and makes sure that people get paid, and, you know, all of those office-type positions. So we've managed to shore some of that up over the past years. As our city grows in that direction, you know, we've created Station Nine, and we, you know, we've got this fire station going. We still need a training facility. So all of those things are lined up in the strategic plan to include future organizational charts on what other positions that we need to keep up with.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi, Chief. Do you mind going back to the slide that shows the number of calls for the stations?
This one or this one?
That one. Thank you.
Now, these are, just keep in mind, these are west.
Okay, the west, and that was part of what I was wondering. So these are Western community stations?
Correct. So Station Seven, the green is Okeechobee Boulevard. Station Nine, the red is Haverhill and Roebuck, and then Station Eight is Northlake, Ibis area out west.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I know in a lot of emergency situations or facilities that provide emergency services, they have per diem staff or staff that, that complement the regularly-scheduled employees. Do we have anything like that in place? Do we have any type of officers that, that, or officers, excuse me, firefighters that we can use during peak seasons, that we can use during peak times, that could go from different places that wouldn't necessarily be at one particular station, but could go where we as a city need the most?
We would just hire overtime, kind of like we do with special event staffing. If we have Sunfest, we'll hire people that are off-duty to come work the detail in that.
Okay, because per diem employees would not require benefits, and it wouldn't be the same cost as overtime?
And our overtime is not pensionable, so we don't, it's not an impact in that way. It's just they get a time and a half of their hourly rate, and it's not a pensionable benefit.
Okay.
Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for the presentation. About two weeks ago, I was driving home, and at 25th and Broadway, as I was crossing through, a woman stopped in the middle of Broadway, and I didn't realize what had happened until I pulled through, and I saw there was a man on the bike on the ground. And I got out of the truck and went over, and no one was calling 911. So I get on the phone with 911, and it was probably about a two-minute response. And as, there was an argument going on between the man on the bike on the ground and the woman driver, it was probably the longest two minutes of my life. And so, when you're in an emergency like that, and thank goodness, in that case, no one was critically injured, we're looking at response times, and, and those two minutes can be really stressful for the person that are, that's involved. And so, I, I understand that your job is not easy, trying to allocate staff, and looking at the call volume that comes out of, of the Station Eight call center. You know, I can't help but think about the fact that still the 606 calls are still some of the longest calls of people's lives, calling in for emergencies, and that extra time is, is really meaningful to our residents. So as we're looking at what, what staffing could be in, in the area, you know, we just hired 30-plus firefighters. Are there any availability to, you know, have that kind of flexible staffing, as you have recommended, to say, we're in one of the highest call volumes coming in, and making sure that we have firefighters there to address calls?
Sure. I can assure you that what's happening east of Military, those units are running probably four times what is going on out there. So, you know, our peak time in town is typically, you know, during the business week and on weekend nights. So when would we be able to free those people up? I mean, it's, it's a delicate balance between using mutual aid and keeping services in town where there's a lot of activity. So those 30 firefighters didn't even fill all of the openings that we have, unfortunately. We had to, we lost some in the process, and we're, we're down to eight in, in our new process, and we have 17 vacancies. So we're still not even fully-staffed to where we need to be to meet just the, the days off that are, you know, contractually required for our staff, for our firefighters. And, you know, we don't have extra bodies. We're, every day, we're hiring overtime, and our overtime is, our overtime budget is fragile this coming year. So we're going to be looking at where can we change what we do on a daily basis with the rest of the city. So if I'm going to be left with a fragile overtime budget for this coming year, I need to know, you know, with, with, what are our priorities? If I don't have enough to hire overtime to staff what's required now, what am I going to do? That comes with service changes elsewhere in the city. So unfortunately, it all boils down to, to the budget.
So understanding that there, there are limited resources and unlimited need. I know you've talked a number of times about the Community Medic Program, and I was just curious if something like that, looking at how we address our calls on the east-of-Military neighborhoods, so that, that may potentially free up resources to address the, the Western neighborhoods, or, you know, having a, a Community Medic-type program here where at least there is a response. Again, that, that time of just waiting, you've called 911, you're in an emergency, and you just need someone to be there. If we can shorten that time period, is this, is the Community Medic Program something that would be applicable either here or would help, if applied, in the Eastern communities to free up resources?
Theoretically, yes. We have, we've gotten to where we were able to get some vehicles. The most expensive part, the infrastructure is there now. We've got the vehicles, we've got the defibrillators, which are about $40,000 apiece, so we've got two of those, we've got the equipment necessary. You know, we were getting ready to, to use those in the, in the COVID response, and then kind of early in the summer, that, that, you know, we shut down the testing side, and we shut down the vaccine side, and everything was kind of status quo for a while, and now we're on the peak with, with Delta. So our, our call volume is back up, the firefighters are, you know, having wait times at the hospitals. So it's just occupying a lot more of our time again. So the Community Medic was kind of another part of hiring all those firefighters, was hopefully on, on some, if we were shored up on staffing, maybe we could reallocate some of those people. We just don't have them yet. You know, unfortunately, we just, we're still understaffed. We're trying, we haven't, should have eight firefighters starting next month, and then we had, we're going to be opening up for applications for hiring again in September. So we're doing everything we can to, to put bodies on, but we've got to have people in place, you know. Theoretically, yes, we could get those Community Medics to, to handle some of what they call low-acuity calls, so they're not crisis right now. They're something that people need some referral for, maybe work within the community to get them services, to reduce those high-utilizers dependence on 911.
So essentially, that would free up, if, if we got staffing and equipment, so it still comes down to a staffing issue, so that way we'd free up kind of the, the larger response needed. Understood?
Potentially, yes.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I had a question, if you could just kind of clarify how this partnership works, I guess, with Palm Beach County and Palm Beach Gardens. I mean, for example, if the rescue was out on a medical call and a fire call came in, then would, are they just on standby to get those calls? Does that impact the response time? I mean, I would imagine it does. I wasn't sure if it was included in, in the response time you gave us an average, or if it's more than that. I mean, obviously, you never know when the call's going to come in, so it makes it, you want to have the people ready all the time, and having only one truck available is really limiting. So I'm just curious if you can talk a little bit about, I guess, how this backup plan works, and how those calls are transferred to the other.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So we have what's called a countywide mutual aid agreement, which we are all signed on to, and that just means that neighboring firefighter, neighboring fire departments will help one another out in the event that they need it. We can request assistance. So for example, if Riviera Beach has a large fire, they can request mutual aid from us, and we'll send, you know, a couple of units up there. Same with the town of Palm Beach. We'll go over the bridge and help them when they need it. So because we're on a regional dispatch system with Palm Beach County, it's, it's, they don't have to call the chief and say, hey, can, can you help us? So that reduces that time. So it's automatic that the next closest unit or the next closest station, and, and they can look at it on GPS monitoring of where the fire trucks are and say, hey, you know, we've got something down the road, can you grab this? So if you look on the lower left, that's county, that's a county fire station. So if Eight is out, there's one there, there's another county fire station east of here on the B-line, and then there's one in Palm Beach Gardens, a little bit further east. So one or the other of those, those stations would be dispatched out to go cover that call. So for example, Fire Station Seven is out off of Okeechobee Boulevard and just west of Jog. So there's a county fire station just east of the Turnpike, so they would be the next ones that would go in there. So Fire Station 23 from the county would run over to our Station Seven call. So that's how the mutual aid coverage works.
Okay, we'll start back around. President Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. If you can go back to Slide Eight. So, so we see a, a total response time for Station Eight and then citywide. I assume in that citywide number of six minutes and 40 seconds includes the Station Eight response time?
Yes, sir.
So if you took out the Station Eight response time, the rest of the city actually probably have a lower response time, if you took out Station Eight by, by whatever number of seconds. Probably not minutes, but probably seconds.
Probably close to 620, 610.
Okay. So there would even be a greater disparity- Okay, so there would even be a greater disparity between the citywide response and the Station Eight response because of the fact that Station Eight is included in that citywide. And then the other issue, the mayor asked about the percentage of time, a percentage of times where another agency has to come into Station Eight's zone. And you had suggested it was ten percent. To clarify that, that's probably because of the fact that most calls are rescue calls involving a medical call. I would say probably eighty percent of the calls we get are probably medical, right? Somewhere in there?
If you look at the difference between these two slides in our heat map.
Eighty percent, ninety percent maybe.
Out there, it's probably closer than, I don't have the exact number, but it's significantly higher medical.
So it's understandable that we have a rescue out there, that we can handle the rescue calls. We're handling the rescue calls, you know. But if you look at the other ten percent of the calls that are the, you know, the calls that might be fires or car accidents, a hundred percent of the time, we're having to have some other agency come in. So if it's not a medical call, a hundred percent of the time, we have to have assistance. Would that be accurate?
For, for fire calls, a hundred percent of the time.
We can't handle, we can handle the rescue calls most of the time unless they come back-to-back.
Correct. Yeah, that was what I was going to say was unless then a second call comes in or if it's a complicated call like an overdose with cardiac arrest or something.
Right.
Something along those lines that requires an EMS captain and another crew to assist. So the majority of the calls, one truck can handle.
Right.
But then on these calls, there's always going to be a need for assistance.
Right, so I'm sorry, Chief.
Whether it's a fire, whether it's a vehicle accident, because a vehicle accident, you go out the door with at least a rescue and a fire engine. Sometimes more is needed, sometimes you need special operations if it's an extended incident, something of that nature. On a fire in town, in the Eastern communities, we typically handle our fires with just city units unless our ladder truck is occupied on another call. But the further, you know, we get mutual aid, the further away from the city proper that you get because there are less units to cover out there. So we might, we might get, you know, a Gardens engine, a Palm Beach County engine, West Palm engine, an assortment of units for a fire that's out in that region.
Right, so to sum it up, we can handle most medical calls ourselves. If a medical call involves a cardiac arrest or anything significant, a serious traumatic injury, we have to have help. We can't handle a cardiac arrest ourselves in Zone Eight, ever.
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Require assistance.
It requires assistance just because of the nature of the, the extent of the care that that person needs requires more than three people can handle.
Right, and that's just what I'm suggesting is that you can't just look at call volume. You know, if you want to make sure you have proper staffing and coverage, you should be able to cover a car accident or a cardiac arrest within your zone by yourself, but with the either-or system, you can't. And that's my argument against the either-or system, that we always have to have assistance for any significant medical call or anything other than a medical call. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Chief, I was curious, you mentioned that we had seventeen open positions right now, is that right? And we're looking at, hopefully, eight more will be graduating soon and we'll be filling some of those vacancies. Is there a, is there a gold standard for the amount of open positions? I mean, obviously, we want to be a hundred percent fully staffed, but, you know, understanding that people retire and that there's always some, you know, hiring and people leaving.
The fire department does not typically carry vacancies like some other departments in the city do. Where typically, our vacancies are typically filled unless throughout the year we have a retirement or, you know, something of that nature. We received that grant that, you know, between the grant and putting Engine One back in service, we had forty-one vacancies at one point and that for us is unheard of. You know, we might hover around two to three and we'll hire when we get about five vacancies. But by and large, this is kind of an unheard-of situation that we're in. You know, the market is, is great for firefighters out there to get jobs right now. There's a lot of departments that are expanding, so there's a lot of need for firefighters right now with COVID and the call volumes that are going on across the state. So we're doing everything we can. We have a hiring team, we have an HR rep that works almost full-time with us. And, you know, we're doing everything we can to put those people on the crew and it's just time.
Thank you. And also a follow-up to Commissioner Paduzzi's question about the response time. Is there a national gold standard for response time?
There is, the National Fire Protection Administration Seventeen Ten is the chapter and there are time, time and assembly standards that are in there. And, you know, it says that, for example, our, our total call time to assemble at a fire for the first due unit is four hundred and eighty seconds. And then there's other standards, other time benchmarks within that. So one of the things that you see here, it's a sixty-second turnout per NFPA. It's a sixty-second turnout time for EMS calls where you're not putting on any additional gear. It's eighty seconds for fire call where you have to put on the bunker, take these shoes off, put the bunker pants on, put the coat on and get on the call. So by and large, we do well with that. As far as the turnout time, you can see there is some lag out at Station Eight, which, you know, we have the information. We're going to, you know, we're going to dig a little bit further into that because we have to look at, because the call volume is what it is, we have to see what's causing that. Is it because they're already on the road or is, you know, why that time difference is? But travel time, when you build a fire station, the original location, the original planned location for the fire station out there was within the community. And it's outside on North Lake, but this gives them broader access to the corridor for the car accidents. So that was before my time as far as being in this seat to where that fire station location was ultimately built. But the travel time can, you know, the, fire stations are supposed to be within a two-mile radius, but when you move out to kind of an unincorporated area as that was initially and where our fire station was, and now it's been annexed by Palm Beach Gardens. So, you know, the zones kind of grow based on what are the neighboring departments doing and where is the population? Our zone goes really far east, but a lot of it is just, the real only hazard is North Lake Boulevard. There's no, nothing's happening very much in grassy waters, right, fortunately? Because it's, you're not allowed to go out in the preserve alone. So it keeps, you know, occasionally we get calls into the other areas for hikers or things like that. But, you know, the total response time, if something is on fire, if it's a fire call, is four hundred and eighty seconds where the first due unit has to get there. So we do lag in that area.
Thank you.
Chief, is there anything inherently bad about taking advantage of mutual aid agreements? Does that mean that we are deficient as a department because we call upon other departments to help us from time to time?
Bad is not the word I would use. It's just, that's why they exist. The mutual aid agreements exist for that purpose because not everybody can have, you know, full staffing on, at each fire station. You know, I think it's wholly different when you don't have a fire station there at all versus, you know, having one that is there most of the time. Is my feeling that someday we're going to need to get to that point? Absolutely, the same with Fire Station Nine. But, you know, when I'm looking at what I have to do within the department right now with what I have, I have to do what's, what's in the interest of the big picture and the calls for service, you know, we're busy as a system and they're just going up and we have to, we have to do what we can to plan for the future to keep up with this. And, you know, I'm in a, I'm in a difficult position with this in particular because it is so, it is so far away from the rest of the city services. But at the same time, when they're not there that ten percent of the time, somebody else is having to cover those calls.
And one other question, and I forget what slide it was, where you talked about the number of calls for service compared to seven and nine. Yeah, that one. Of that number, do you have any idea what percentage are fire-related?
I couldn't find out. I don't have it broken down in this. But citywide, we're about seventy-five percent medical and twenty-five percent fire-related.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about out west, though.
More medical.
Station Eight.
More medical.
More medical.
These are, yeah, when you, I mean, really the comparison is here on the heat map. The blues are medicals, these are fire-related.
So in that same period, we had what, nine, ten fire-related? We comparing apples to apples? August twenty, August of twenty to July twenty-one, and then go to the slide ten, yeah. Okay.
For, for one calendar year.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Shoff, I think is next.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I guess as I sit in and listen, the main theme is that there's never enough resources. And Chief Matty, I think you have a very difficult job. It sounds like we are headed in the direction to hire more firefighters, so to get more resources. So that issue is being taken care of. And then there is the issue of staffing at this particular station, which Chief Matty has offered some suggestions and ways to resolve that. So I guess my question would be more of an administrative question. Mayor and city administrators, how do we start to implement some of those suggestions of taking a look at the highest call volume times and putting extra staffing there at those times and starting that hybrid model? Is that something that we can look at from a staff perspective per the chief's request or suggestion?
Well, we'll wait to hear what the request, recommendation is from the chief. I mean, I think we take that into account whenever we go through budgeting period. Ms. Johnson, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but the chief's input as to her, we solicit the chief's input when we're putting together the budget.
So, just so that I understand.
Let me have Ms. Johnson respond to that, please.
That is correct. Now, as part of the budget process for FY twenty-two, we did not get to this level of discussion in terms of future need. We were looking at what is needed for FY twenty-two and what can be funded within the confines of the budget. Chief and I have had a subsequent discussion, subsequent meaning, to the development of the balanced budget for FY twenty-two to start talking about future needs based on the board's discussion about the strategic plan in the fall and then how those future needs can be taken into consideration.
So if I understand, FY twenty-two is set without recommendations of having additional staffing, but there are ongoing discussions to determine the strategy going forward of potentially funding things like flexible staffing, of looking at the highest call times, et cetera. So FY twenty-two, what we've been presented in the budget, does not include those recommendations. But those recommendations are being reviewed for potential budget allocations as we look at FY twenty-two going forward?
Correct. On your latter statement, those discussions are being viewed in the context of bringing it into the strategic planning discussion for the fall. And then that's going to then shape the budget for FY twenty-three and moving forward.
Okay, just so that I can clarify about the direction that we're headed forward, is that to say then our position is that any of these recommendations would not be addressed until FY twenty-three? Or is there a potential for them to be addressed in FY twenty-two? Not in the budget, but in subsequent discussions to the budget, or it has to wait until FY twenty-three?
You know, I can't say whether or not it has to wait until FY twenty-three from this perspective. When the board gets into the strategic planning discussion that is contemplated for the fall and based on what direction comes out of that, the board has, you know, a couple of options based on fund balance. If the board determines this is a critical need, that we need to be looking at fund balance to fund this and then there is support from the board, because if you look at fund balance, you have a requirement that when you use it for operations, you have to have a plan on how you're going to replace that. So those will be part of the discussions and then we'll look at the options that are available to the board related to funding and then get what policy direction will come out of that. So I can't say that your only option would be it has to wait to FY twenty-three. I would tell you that whatever options you look at, we need to know how that funding would be impacted in the conditions and requirements that come with it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. Just to that point, I wondered if Chief Matty would be able to give us a budget for the part-time flexible staffing, just so that we have an idea when we're looking at these options in the fund balance.
Sure, I can work on that, absolutely. Would you like it also to include Station Nine? Essentially, this is, this is what's left hanging out there. Station Eight is an adaptive response unit, either-or. Station Nine is a rescue truck that runs out of a trailer. By and large, the rest of the city, response-wise, we have at least two units at all the other stations. You know, I can do it for both, I can do it including the community paramedic, I can do it with kind of like what Commissioner Warren suggested, just kind of not necessarily a reserve cadre, but with just overtime, you know, I can formulate it any way the board would like.
Well, let me ask, as part of the discussion, and we just began those discussions, I want the commissioners to be clear about that. We've just come through presenting the preliminary balanced budget. Chief and I have began to have the discussion about future needs. I don't want the board to be under the false impression that we have had full-blown discussions because we're still in the process of preparing for the first and second budget adoption hearings. So that has been my focus. Understanding the concern and comments that came out of the discussions about the strategic plan, particularly, they were in the context of the discussion on the fire assessment fee. That's why Chief and I started having those discussions. I would think, and this would be my suggestion, when you look at the different options that you've just articulated, whether it is for Fire Station Nine, Fire Station Eight, the flexible funding, that all of those would be wrapped into strategic plans so we're not just dealing with piecemeal options. That we look at all of those and bring those into strategic planning. The board will have that full picture, the various projected cost estimates. We will be looking at what the projected revenue increases are for fire assessment, for the general fund, for fund balance, and then the board can make an informed decision on how much of this that we want to bite out within the confines of the fiscal constraints that we have to operate under.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Fox?
Yes, thank you. I just, you know, if we're going to start looking at it and looking at the fund balance, I just want to understand what, you know, what the needs are so that we can start planning.
I'll be prepared for the strategic planning session with multiple options.
All right, Commissioner Warren.
Chief Matty, that's a huge responsibility to look at the entire city and be able to make decisions and recommendations on where you see the greatest needs and really, really focusing on that. When we, and I heard you say a lot of things, so I would like to make sure that I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
You've spoken about staffing deficiencies that exist for the entire city. So given the opportunity to bring in more firefighters, where would you ideally be able to put those people first?
The very first place they go is where the overtime person is today. Because we are, the level that we are at right now is because we're hiring overtime for those positions. We have numerous firefighters out on COVID right now. Any kind of extended injuries, we have several firefighters that are out on extended medical. Any kind of extended injuries, we have several firefighters that are out on extended medical. When they give birth to a child or, or adopt a child, they get time off. So there's, there's a lot of factors in why firefighters aren't at work. Vacation time, or, or whatever the contractual agreements provide for. The very first place those are going to go is to remove those overtime spots from the roster. So they will come in so that we don't have to hire someone off duty to fill that. So that we'll be, we're hoping to be at our baseline by January. So in January, when we should have all of our seats filled, possibly February, then we can evaluate, well, how much overtime money do we have left? How many people a day are we hiring? And how many can I assign out to others, to other projects? For example, community medic, for example, part-time staffing at Station Eight, or, you know, wherever that need is. We just have to get to that level of, of staffing that, that gives me the ability to put those people on the, on the truck with our fragile overtime budget as it is.
If I could, Mayor, let me just underscore here, because I think it's important that the board has a clear understanding when we talk about the impact of overtime. So if I take the FY twenty-one budget, Fire's overtime budget was two-point-seven million. It becomes a major fiscal impact when, because of the various things that you have to navigate with firefighters being on vacation or out for paternity or maternal, maternity leave, or whatever the, the reason may be. If you take that two-point-seven million that is in the overtime budget, the use of that is not, per se, the problem. The problem comes in when you use all of that two-point-seven million, which is the case as we speak, and then have to fund those off-times with overtime, and it exceeds that two-point-seven million. That's the situation that we have with fire and police. Fire's overtime budget is two-point-seven, and I know this discussion is not related to police, but it, the impact is the same. Police's overtime budget is two-point-two million. The reason you have the overtime budget in there is because you have the staffing challenges that have to be balanced. It becomes a major fiscal impact when they exceed the overtime budget, and that's what we have. If the board goes back to, and I know we've had several work sessions and discussions, and a lot of the nuances tend to get lost in translation. But Fire's overtime budget was significantly impacted because of COVID-nineteen. Police's overtime budget was significantly impacted this year, or last year primarily, because of the number of protests. Those were the drivers. So when they exceed what is budgeted for overtime, that's the major fiscal impact that we have. Now, what we try to do as a first step is that where the other general fund departments underspend their budgets, we absorb the excess cost over the overtime budget from those. So that's the first place that I'm going to look for, as opposed to coming to the board saying we need to take money out of fund balance. Now theoretically, if the overtime excess cannot be absorbed from cost savings from the other general fund line item accounts, then we're in the position where we're looking at fund balance. So I just want the board to be clear on that. And when you look at fund balance, if we have discretionary unassigned fund balance, that's the first place we look. There is no requirement under the city code that we have to have a financial plan on how you replace that. But once you utilize all of the discretionary unassigned fund balance, if you hit that three percent fund balance that's required by code, or if you go into that third level of unas, of fund balance, the ten percent for emergency reserves, that's when the board has to have a financially feasible plan on how you would replace it.
Okay. President Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could go back to slide eight, just, I needed a clarification from you.
Yes, sir.
It says Station Eight and then citywide. Station Eight, does that mean the whole Zone Eight? Meaning, or is that just the response times for the city units, or is it all units?
Those are response times for the city units running out of that fire station, covering that zone.
What about when we have Gardens or the County come in? Those could be considerably longer response times then.
Yes. I would have to pull the, I would have to pull the, the numbers from Fire Dispatch to get those, but that is for our units running in that zone.
So that's even more troubling to me, that we've got an eight-minute, twenty-six second response time just for Station Eight units, when at least ten percent or ten percent of the time, I mean, I, I just... It's hard for me to understand the ten percent of the time, because I see Gardens and County in that area so often, but maybe it's just at those car accident calls and the ones that are more visible. But that's really concerning to me, because that eight minutes could, you know, it's probably higher than that if you average in the response times from Station Twenty-Six or, or Garden Station. The response times could even be nine minutes or ten minutes if you average in those others.
I can revisit that with County Dispatch to get that, that information for you.
Okay, and then as a follow-up, are there any other areas of our city where we have such a lengthy response time of eight minutes, twenty-six seconds? And that's giving us the benefit of the doubt that it really is eight minutes, twenty-six seconds. So are there any other areas of the city where the response times are that lengthy?
There could be, there could be a number of factors where on a given day it is that way, but in general, the answer is no. For example, if Fire Station Two is out and they're working with Station Four on the interstate, and there's traffic and rain, it could be a while before Fire Station One then gets all the way down to Arlington Road.
We're talking about averages here.
Averages. They're, on, on a regular occasion, no.
Okay. So that Zone Eight has the longest response times in the city. And I would think that the, the people of Ibis Reserve, Ibis, Northlake Boulevard, if you get into an accident, Grassy Waters, if you have a medical, deserve, you know, to have, have a quick response time, just like everyone else in the city. I mean, those minutes seem like hours when you're waiting. So it's significant that there's a couple-minute additional response time, maybe even more if we factor in those other agencies coming in, which I thought that that covered Zone Eight. But when I saw Station Eight, that's when it just came to me, that it's probably longer than eight minutes and twenty-six seconds. I would assume that it's the gold standard to have an engine and a rescue that are fully manned at each station. Would that be correct?
Utopia, absolutely.
So the two stations in my zone, I have three city stations in my, in my district. Stations Eight and Nine fall somewhere short of the gold standard.
Correct. We, we, as this city has grown, from when, when I started in nineteen ninety-four, we had six fire stations and four rescue trucks. You know, over this, this time period, we have grown to, to where we are now. And, you know, is that mapped out in the future growth in our fire department? I do believe it is. So I guess I have a little bit of a different perspective on it in seeing how far we have come. And maybe I'm looking back on that too much, but where the future needs to be as, as our city continues to grow. Another thing that, that happens downtown, the higher we go, the longer it takes to get from the front door to the top floor. So when, we're going to start seeing longer response times to patient contact when, when we build more buildings in the air. Because that's where our calls are, are happening downtown. So we're doing what we can to, you know, we bought smaller fire trucks that are a little bit shorter wheelbase and a little bit better turning radius. We're getting a tiller so that we can navigate the downtown streets to get to those locations. So it's changing, you know, as, as we speak. Who would have ever thought we were even discussed community paramedics, but here we are. You know, I agree with you in that, that is, you know, longer than it is in the city, you know. But, but that's distance. That's just time on the road, the, the, going through into a gated community, navigating, you know, curvy streets with, you know, street calming, and all those things are factors that take us that time. You know, Dispatch does an absolutely perfect job with, with their call handling time. Can we save some time on the turnout time? Absolutely. And we will make a point of, of discussing that with the battalion chiefs and the crews out there. So we're going to, we're going to do everything we can to shave off that time, but the fact remains that, you know, there is, there is time and distance between the firefighters and the people that live out in that community.
And no doubt, we've come a long way. I mean, we really have. I mean, there was nothing out there several years ago, and, and we do have good coverage out there, you know, compared to where we were. And I don't think anyone's going to argue that. I just would like to just make sure that, that we have as good a coverage out there as we have everywhere in the city. And we're the city of West Palm Beach. We should be able to handle our own, and we should have good coverage. And Mayor, I don't, I don't know if we ever allow public comment during work session, but I know that Mr. Fasso has indicated that he would, he would like to say something.
I understand that, but we don't allow public comment during work session.
I figured I'd just ask.
All right. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I just have one question about the agency calls and what the dynamic is like. For example, I think you mentioned that Station Eight only has a lieutenant in charge. So I was wondering if, let's say, we're going to a car accident or a fire where we have to have an agency come in, who is in charge of those situations? Are, I mean, are we in charge because it is a West Palm Beach incident and we've called in someone, or someone who...
Sure. I can explain that. It kind of depends on the, the situation. So for example, if we go to a motor vehicle accident, that is just a basic motor vehicle accident where, you know, we're not having to remove the doors or the roof off of the car, and it's just a fire truck and a rescue. So it's typically the first arriving unit, that officer assumes control, control of the scene. If we then start to get more units coming in for something extensive such as a fire, you get someone of a higher rank that's in charge. So it's either the captain or, or a battalion chief that runs the incident. So when I mentioned that, I was mentioning as an incremental step towards a goal. You know, that's something that, you know, putting a higher level of authority out there is something that is, you know, part of what Ms. Johnson was talking about, the strategic planning. That could be something that we look at when we look at the big picture on how do we get to where everyone is comfortable with what we do? And, and I think without, you know, that's just one little piece of the puzzle that, that would get us to a fully-staffed Fire Station Eight, one little thing at a time.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. You know, I've, throughout the years, I've heard many different times each of us prioritize public health and public safety within our city. And seeing these response times is alarming. And knowing that we're a city that does have the resources to be able to overcome these situations, you know, I look forward to the financial analysis and report that you're going to give us. And I just wanted to clarify when we would be able to review that. I know it's been discussed at a forthcoming strategic plan session. Is that in the next few months? Is that the plan?
Yes. As we talked about strategic planning during the prior work sessions, we have teed it up for the fall, and I believe the mayor is looking at a November date. And once we finalize, you know, dates, then we would back into, you know, all of the information that we need and getting it out in advance of that session and structuring that session and, you know, just planning it all out. But I believe the mayor is looking at a November strategic planning date.
Yes.
Thank you.
Chief, talk to me, it, it looks like as I look at this particular slide, the, the two-minute differential seems to be related to travel time. Is that because of where the station is located versus the service area that it has to get to? How, how is the travel time? Walk us through what that entails.
Let me go to something with a map. So when you're looking at the zone map, for, for some of this is a straight shot out Northlake Boulevard, and you can go fifty-five or sixty miles an hour to the incident and, and get there in, in plenty of time. When you're navigating a gated community or two, when you're going out to past Hamlin, and, and some of these are dead ends with canals, and there's only one way to get there, because you have to go around a canal, you're in a residential area, you can't go as fast. Like I can't, my trucks in Northwood, when they're going through, you know, Thirty-seventh Street, they can't go as fast on that road as they can on Broadway. So it's, it's all about the dynamics of the neighborhood and what the pathways are to get to that home. For some of these homes in the back of Ibis, there's only one way to get there, and you have to, you have to go through the entirety of Ibis to get there. With the south end, if we take Dixie Highway, you know, we're at least forty miles an hour, straight shot, and, and we don't have to stop at a gate, although they do an excellent job of getting us in the gate. Don't, don't misinterpret what I'm saying. There's other agencies that have to fight unmanned gates, where they have to get out and open it to open the gate themselves. We're fortunate in the city that we have a lot of gates that we can either punch a code into, or we can turn with a key and it opens. We don't have to go get keys out of a box. So we're, we do have a, our fire prevention department does a great job with that. But in dealing with, with that, I mean, we do have a distance from the fire station. That is just plain and simple. I don't know the mileage exactly to the, to the very last home within there, but just geographically, it's far more, it's, there's a greater distance between where, let's say, for example, Rescue One running a call at Fifteenth and Dixie has to go to versus where these calls are occurring in the distance from the fire station.
So that number, the travel time, wouldn't change if we have more personnel in the station? That number is going, I mean, whatever these difficulties, intricacies there may be with respect to travel time is, is going to be there, no matter how many people you have on the truck.
That's built in just because of the geography of the, the area.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Sal, I apologize, but we really, if, if I start letting certain people speak, then every work session, we're going to have people who want to speak, so I can't make that exception. Anything else on this item? Okay, Chief, thank you. We'll, we'll continue to address this, certainly with our strategic planning as we go forward.
Thank you.
On mayor's matters, just a couple of things. Obviously, we want to keep the folks in the path of Hurricane Ida, Louisiana, et cetera, in, in our thoughts and prayers. I understand from Chief that we have already sent four personnel up to that area to help address the situation. We may get the call for more, so thank you, Chief. Thank you to West Palm Beach Fire for stepping up in, in a time of, of need. We, we did, as I understand it, lose another employee to COVID over the weekend. So that continues to be a challenge for us as a city. And that's all that I have. Commissioners, do you have any other things for the good of the body? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. I am so sorry to hear about another employee that we've lost to COVID. And actually, that's timely, related to the comments that I was going to make. I was going to mention how grateful I am that we were able to pass a vaccine incentive through the American Rescue Funds Act that the city received. And so I was wondering if we have a timeline for talking about the second tranche of funds that we'll be receiving? And if in that timeline, we've, or in that plan, if administration has looked at any other incentives, maybe community partnering with community organizations or churches for vaccine incentive programs as well? Thank you.
We'll probably start talking about that closer to the time we're due to get the money, which is what we expect in May of next year.
That is correct.
Yeah. So we, we got to see what the world looks like between now and that time, and hopefully see what the needs are of the community at that time. So that's why we'll probably have to start having those conversations, I would say, around the beginning of, of, of next calendar year as we get closer to May. Any other questions or comments? All right, here again, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. We'll see you this evening. All right, here again, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. We'll see you this evening.